Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, October 21st. It's now 7:00 PM. We can start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, on which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any public comments? Say none? Correspondents?
No.
I would accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes from October 7th, 2025. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? There. Say none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes from October 14th, 2025.
Second.
We're all here. Any questions? Say none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll go for the report for the first selectman tonight. We have some other things to cover. First off, we have discussions of veterans' benefits. This popped up on the agenda. We've had it on the other floor. So what I'm doing is I'm just handing out some homework, just something for us to look at. These are the changes to the municipal property tax exemptions for veterans and relatives for October 1st, 2025. We'll take a look at this and we can have a further discussion at a future meeting, but I want to make sure you guys have this. Is there anything you'd like to talk about tonight? We'll probably, unless John Silver come in.
Is this our, if I can just quickly, are these our changes or is this state?
This is state changes.
State changes.
Yeah, this is, so these are some of the things that we have as options. You know, if we want to try to increase veteran benefits. Nothing to do except hand that out. Volunteer party EMS incentives. Similar situation. I mean, I don't have, I'm supposed to meet with the Fire Board next month. But obviously, this has been something we've talked about many, many times. What I'm including here is a proposal that came from Matt Troy last June. Most of the, I think the questions, the questions we're going to face are incentives in two ways. Number one, we have tax incentives. The problem is that a lot of the folks, you know, younger people especially may not have something taxed here. If they're out of town, we'll have to do something with another town to give them that incentive, which is possible. Most of our Fire Board members and people are talking about doing a paid call incentive. What you have here is kind of just a whole bunch of incentives altogether, the things that we can do to help our volunteer firemen. So again, I'm going to hand it out as kind of, you know, information will be ready for the record as well. I think we're going to have to talk about whether or not we're going to do a paid call. I mean, Brad, I know we spoke before about what kind of, what that would mean to the IRS, and it would be something we, taxable, right?
Yeah, so any income is taxable. I think for 20, it's either for 2025 or 2026, they increased the 1099 amount. Whether or not we issue 1099, any income is taxable.
Right.
Um, so it would be treated as income.
Yeah.
Because it's not a reimbursement.
If we pay the taxes, is that still considered an income?
I believe it is. I don't know if we're allowed to gross up the taxes.
In essence, one week, like we did that at one point with the registrars when they went on the, not the actual registers, the election workers. To get them, when it became taxable, we increased the amount that they got. So they'd still net about the same, but you can't, you can't pay the taxes for them. You'd have to pay more. But when it came up at one point, without knowing the volume of calls, because it varies, we talked about doing an amount and either quarterly splitting it by the amount of calls. You'd have to almost do it that way initially, because there's not a pot of money there. You'd have to create a pot of money for it to draw down. Um, so.
If you recall, we were, we were talking about at the beginning of the smudgy year, about saving aside $100,000 for such a pot of money. I mean, we could, we could agree to do, like, I don't know, $80,000 and say that's the pot at the end of the year based on what the call volume of the Fire Commission comes up with, that we just do the incentive. Um, that's what I think, that's what they want. They want to be able to set the call volume and then, you know, figure out what that number is. I'd be okay with going that way, but again, it's going to be incumbent on our Fire Department to look at this as a pilot program and make sure that they're actually tracking it. So I know that was a problem with their longevity program from years ago.
Yeah, they were, they were looking at, I don't know if you want to discuss it.
Sure.
Or you come to the meeting next month, they were talking about possibly 5% of total calls that they would have to make to be eligible for.
Right. And that would be tracked by each department, the chiefs, or, okay. And I assume it would be tracked in what, first due? In their app?
Yeah, I think that's what they had mentioned, that app.
Yeah. Well, I mean, would we, would we be comfortable moving along with a number? To start out, or do you want to waste time?
No.
How about November? Okay.
Could I ask Brad to look into what we currently pay the Fire Department?
What we currently pay them for the tax incentive?
I mean, you don't have to do it now, but yeah.
I think we've been given that number before. This was from 7/11/24. It was $24,948 and 81 cents. This was July 2024. And these were the checks, the number of the tax, they actually just give a check to everybody. But anybody who, you know, doesn't have something taxable or is out of town is not included.
Yeah. And why it's in that number is it's up to $1,000 or something.
Right.
Our bill.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll plan to continue the discussion if the, the next.
Perfect.
Seems very moving right along, aren't we? Okay. The, I move to table the consideration of approval of recycling trunk. All in favor, say aye. Okay, so with respect to the consideration of approval change of sofa disposal fee, we've been recommended that the current fee right now is $25 to $35. A better range would be $25 to $50. Part of it is if you have larger sleeper sofas, it's more expensive, more difficult to get rid of. I would certainly be in favor of that. We would have to have a public hearing. We'll put a vote on it. We can set that date now. We didn't have a, an actual date set. Would you gentlemen, if you want to look at your calendar here, would you prefer to wait until the next meeting? We'll look at the calendar and pick a day. We can do it right before next meeting. Our next meeting is, what, 6, we can do it at 6:30 before, that's on the setup. Oh, sorry, 4th, November 4th is our next meeting. Probably.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, man.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get business done. You know, I mean, it's not necessarily a huge hurry. So the next one is what the?
Maybe the 7th.
What is the 7th?
The 4th or whatever.
What's the one after that?
I don't think.
18, yep.
Why don't we do it 18th to 6:00? That work for everybody? Okay. Um, I move that we set a public hearing for November 18th at 6:30 PM in Meeting Room A of the Municipal Center to discuss raising the fee for disposal of couches and love seats from $25 to $35 to $25 to $50. Right. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, 6:30. Okay, next up. I move that we approve the tax refunds in the amount of $26,509.89 due to overpaying taxes for the second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that's up to you, Brad.
All right.
Control presentation updates to the left.
So in your package, you have the September 30th Controller Report. Start with the revenue. We're at 31%. Obviously, we're a fourth of the way year. Some of the taxes and stuff is collected upfront. Personal property and car taxes are collected in July. So that number is going to be higher. The biggest things you'll notice on the revenue side is our interest budget is $650,000 for the year. We've already collected $590,000. Obviously, interest rates are still high, so that's why it's still a high number. And we didn't lower it in this past budget because there's talk of at some point it's going to drop. So we didn't want to count on it staying high, but obviously, we're going to get a number for this year. That's on the revenue side. Expense wise, everything's in line. Like, park and rec always looks like it's higher than it should be, but a lot of their expenses are summer base. So they're on track with where they have been like previous years. They should be in a really good spot for this year. They had a really good last year, the last year. And the other only thing that looks out of whack is that service is budgeted for $5 million. We've already spent $4.2 million. We paid all the principles for the year. So the principal is paid in July or August and some of the interest, and then the other interest is paid six months later. It's either January or February. Obviously, the debt service is going to come in right on budget. That is what it is. Other than that, it's early, but it's, there's no, right now, I have no real big concerns. This time last year, I was talking about the biggest concern was utilities. We've adjusted our budget. Some of those public benefit charges have gone away. Hopefully forever, but probably more than likely just for now. But there's nothing that we're hitting the drum on right now that we're really worried about. The world's a difference from where we were last year, because utilities look like it's going to be a mess. Just to give you an update of where we ended up for utilities for 2025, we were over budget by $150,000, which if you told me a year ago, we were only going to be over by $150,000, I'd have been thrilled. Natural gas, we did a little bit better than we had. Gasoline had a decent year on. And some of the electric use was down. So we still had to pay those extra fees. It would have been a really good year if it wasn't for the public benefit charge. We would have come in under budget. But all in all, that worked out well. And just to stick on 2025 for another minute, the employee benefits, we were $260,000 to the good. Some of that is, we had some openings, people didn't take insurance. Obviously, openings, they don't have insurance. We had a couple other people drop. We did pretty well on some other numbers insurance wise and then employee benefits. Park and rec was almost $200,000 under budget. We talked extensively about it at the Board of Finance meeting. They went super conservative with everything after what happened the one year that they were over budget. Some of it is them being really conservative, using up all supplies, some is they cut staffing down. And when the 25 budget was built, they'd already run a summer camp, so they couldn't really see the benefits that year, and they didn't really know what it was going to do and how much they were going to be able to decrease staff. And the other thing on park and rec is some of the programs got off to slower starts. They, their before and after care, their numbers were down a lot. They used to allow the teachers, they pay greatly reduced or nothing, depending on how long they use the program. They, that stopped for 25. And if the teachers wanted to have their kids in it, they had to pay, will vote for it. Some of those teachers pulled out because they, well, using it for like 10, 15 minutes. So that saved a lot on staffing, because they only staff what they need. 25 on the revenue side, we're almost $2 million to the good. Interest was over by $2 million. It's mostly interest. We aren't going to use, we're most likely, the Board of Finance has to vote on it. 25 called for drawing down $500,000 from the Tax Legalization Fund. My recommendation, the Board of Finance, is going to be, leave it in there. We don't need it for 2025. Leave it in there, let that be a little bit of cushion so years that we can't fully fund it, if we need to, we can draw on it. And on the expense side, the Board of Ed's going to come in that budget, I'm sure. I don't have their final numbers yet. Right now, we're $1 million to the good. But it's the health insurance, it's park and rec. We refinanced debt, which saved $200,000. As bad as that one year was, that, that park and rec was, had their lip, and some other accounts did, seemed like a lot of things broke the right way this year. So it was a good year. Hopefully, 26 is a good year too, but we're going to stay on top of it. So, any questions on either 25 or what we're after the first quarter?
If utilities sold like that, it seems like you rely on the budget this year, or does some of the bills not hit? Because I mean, if that's three months worth of expenses.
Well, but it's so, the utilities, you're always dragging a month.
Well, so you've only paid two months.
We've only paid two months. And some of it is in there, when we did the big Amoresco project, we pay like $500,000 a year in debt payments. Those come towards the end. And natural gas is cheap right now. Obviously, it's the cooling season, so electric's higher. But we're barely paying anything for natural gas. And it's cold in here, Ryan, because, you know, I'm trying to save money on it.
Sounds like you got the air conditioner on.
I was going to say, we did hire a new company, they're working on that, right?
Well, I forgot to talk capital. So the update on the capital, I reached out to all the departments that have capital. They're supposed to be getting me something by the end of October, which probably means the first week to November. By charter, the capital report's supposed to be done by the end of November to the Board of Selectmen. So probably not your next meeting, the one after it. And if not, it'll be meant, sent out to the Board of Selectmen by the end of November. Obviously, it's kind of a live document, because things change. But the departments are working on updating their cap rate request for 26. It is, I know, we just did a charter revision, we didn't change anything on it, not a big deal, but like, it is interesting that that's due like four months before, five months before we do a budget, but. No.
Okay, you were going to, you were going to ask, you're doing a motion, a lot of people do, a lot of boards do accept reports, not required by Robert's rules, but I would have certainly, I think, a motion if you'd like to do that.
So.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the control report? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. What is that? Something on a paste paper or something?
I like a truck reversing.
Yeah, must be parked or reverse. Okay.
Mechanic E.
Next up, consideration of creating a part-time office assistant fire physician. So this is something we've talked about a few times. I, I put out what is a draft of what those requirements would be. It's a part-time position. We've talked about this before. You know, there's a, there's a real need for both departments to kind of have some help with respect to tracking medical requirements, help with maybe looking at purchasing, so they're doing the, the same kinds of purchasing of both departments, general admin help, but also that person would help the fire marshal as well in that department, which is a need for Tom, you know, doing everything with first due and getting everything up to date. But again, it's a part-time position. It's desperately needed, I think, too, is a short stop before we ever get to a paid fire physician in the, in the town, like a paid chief or anything like that. It gives us a chance to have the administrative functions. We had a conversation last time when the chiefs were here. The chief of Beppo made some comments about, you know, somebody doing reports and all that. That's not what this position is about. I don't know where he came up with that at night. That is emphatically not what it would be. And this person would actually be under Tom, that, you know, would be the supervisor from Tom Galliford. But then, you know, kind of have dotted on relationships with both chiefs to help with the admin stuff. So that's kind of where we're looking at it now, as far as, you know, the, the financial part of it. We're in pretty decent shape this year, because we have openings right now in health. We would still look for the Board of Finance to probably do a transfer in, right, at the end of the year or whatever for this, to make a new position. So, you know, I believe we have, you know, the commitment for folks to advocate and be on the board, but we'd have to pass it to the Board five months next. So what are your, what are your all thoughts?
Yeah, I think they've been asking for a long time for the help. And it's, and Tom is going to oversee it, and I think it's a good one.
Okay.
How many dollars are your proposals?
It's part-time, it has to be less than, what, 25 a week?
Yeah.
So less than 25?
Less than 25.
24, three days.
Yeah. And you've broken up, because there's some flexibility to do in evenings. That person would also do the Fire Commission. Right? Yeah.
And your salary, you're thinking?
Well, right now, we're either going to do what the, closer to what the town clerk makes, or do an office assistant.
Yeah, we talked, we haven't really finalized that, but it's.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll be within, it'll be within that realm, between the two. You know, it is going to be an office assistant level position, or it's going to be part-time. So we'll take like whatever that salary is, and we'll make it our.
So you'll just follow whatever the similar position.
Similar positions.
So get it.
Right.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Being there with Tommy.
Yeah, with Tommy in that office, yeah.
So just to touch on something, Janice, so we currently have three vacancies. The Health Department has two. And the part-timer that was doing benefits is vacant right now. So even if you look at just those three vacancies for a quarter of the year is like over $40,000 worth of savings that we have in that. Health Department has some part-timers, like the old assistant is doing some hours. But we've already saved enough in the salary from those vacancies to pay more than pay for what this position would be, for 26. Obviously, where the commitment would have to be is, you hate to do it for nine months or eight months, whatever the timing of. I think if you give it a good run, you'd have to do it longer than that.
And let's say, I look at it as a long-term win, because the more we can help with this stuff now and, and help with, you know, managing volunteers, you're managing that this more, it's going to keep us in the long run. That's it. So it'll, it'll be a union position. It'll be our chance to, it'll be a union part-time position. Okay, sure. So with that, I will try minds. All in favor of creating the office assistant?
Did we make a motion?
I'm making right now.
You said we could try our minds.
Oh, did I say that? I'm tired. I move, I said, I move that we create the office assistant fire, office assistant fire as a part-time position, as we've described.
Second.
Any other further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I should say, of course, we're going to talk to the Board of Finance here, we just, but we've passed it along, we won't have a conversation.
And we'll have to look at, Dan and I have to run what we think the number would be, because the Board of Finance, Dan and I can spend, can transfer money out to 50, I think, of the $50,000 within an department. The Board of Finance has to do transfers from one department to another. So that's in part why they should get involved, because if we're going to move money to the fire marshal account, we should just have the money moved. Or at least get them to vote on it. Just because it is a budget transfer.
Excellent. Thank you, Brad. Okay. Next up, consideration of an ad hoc downtown advisory committee. I'm reverishing a letter from Janice. Does that make a difference?
Yeah.
So this has been, it's been an interesting discussion, because at first, it was so tough about trying to put this under EDC. Right now, we have boards and commissions. We really don't address committees in the charter and like that, but if you look at the state law, it's clear that any committee that's formed by body politic like ours has to stay with the minority representation rules. Our charter says boards and commissions have to be residents. So committees do give us an opportunity to appoint people who are in other capacities around town to, to give advice. In this case, you know, you see the letter, she's looking for a downtown committee of business owners, local people down here that can advocate for the business, businesses downtown, promote the town, give advice. In this case, it'll be to the EDC and the Board of Selectmen, because we are any kind of, we are the only appointing authority when it comes to these things. And then we would have to make sure it complies with minority representation. So that, that is kind of the gist of it. What are your, what are your thoughts? I mean, this is a request from our development director. I do think it makes sense.
How does it compete with the chambers, Mr.?
So I asked the same thing. Obviously, he's talking to them, and the difference is that the chamber is focused on the entire town. And it's, and it's basically geared towards their own membership versus like having a downtown committee of some kind. A lot of the places have done this. Now, some of this confusion in the beginning, we were talking about this, I don't know if you ever been talking about it a moment ago. We also have a, a grant right now for a website. When Janice came to us, part of his, you know, that downtown commit, or downtown committee could be part of that too, and say, like, how are we going to do this website? It was part of this Main Street Accelerator program that we chose it for. That committee would also weigh in on that. Now, the, the thing is, we would be making this an ad hoc committee, and I'll test your mind on this. Ad hoc committees can be two things. It can be for a purpose or a duration. In this case, it would be for a specific, or both.
Yeah, otherwise, if it's a standing committee, then it's, it's more perpetual, but if it's really for a limited purpose, then it's in duration, it's an ad hoc.
Well, this is where we were talking, I think, before. If it's a, if we're going to be looking at just doing the website, then it's definitely, you know, ad hoc and it's short. What's, what we're looking for is a standing committee. You know, I would still have called it ad hoc, just like they called sustainable Beppo, I think, ad hoc at one point. They've talked to number, you know, that's the way it's done in the past, because it was for a purpose. Would you be more comfortable just calling it a standing committee?
We were talking about the cultural district that also that they want to form, which did seem to be more of a standing committee. And that that's established under statute, that's, that's a different thing, it's a whole nother thing, so. Well, I have to think about that, because, you know, maybe there, there's some reasons I haven't reviewed every particular number of years, because things sometimes stop having any purpose. So, and if it's, if it's overlapping, maybe it needs to be redefined after a few years. Maybe there should be every few years that look at, is it doing what it's supposed to be doing or not? Because sometimes you end up with committees just out there.
I agree, 100%. Start off, and then you can add on to it.
Doing it for a year and just say, we'll review it every year or something.
Is, is the golf authority still in effect?
We're getting rid of it right now. You were thinking, I was thinking the golf authority, because it was our. That was actually ordinance. Yeah, that was created by ordinance, but we are working towards a dealing with that.
And another question, I guess I would have, looking at the scope of this, which is broader than originally the ad hoc just for the website, which was going to be funded by grant, to my understanding, is, is there any kind of budget requirement for this? I mean, you're promoting, developing the website, you'll have funds for that, at least initially to do that. So I know about continued monitoring of the website and hosting the website, coordinating marketing efforts of that. So is there any kind of financial ask here? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
No, they're not. They may come, but if you think about this, this is going to be advisory through EDC and us. EDC does have a budget towards marketing. This website, this grant we got was towards marketing. It's going to be advisory to the Board of Selectmen. So would we see them coming someday, asking for money for a project? Yeah. But again, we would have control that. They'd probably be asking for a specific project. Right now, they, right now, EDC has marketing money that.
So at this point, they're not asking.
It's advisory, it's not, you know, and then we'd have to discuss, you know, discuss that. If they come to us with something that's really great and it's, you know, that's going to help downtown, then we would have to discuss that.
Otherwise, we're thinking this is within the budget.
This is within the budget, because all they're going to do is be volunteers meeting at town hall.
And just purely advisory.
I mean, if we're, if we're to do it, I mean, we could, we could call it, you know, creation of the, you know, the ad hoc committee, that's advisory committee, and then review it annually.
See how they're doing, and if the scope is what it should be, or wants to change, or just keep tabs of it.
Do we need, should be, wait, we have this part. Should we come back with, I guess, like bylaws or whatever, like we say, simple, that's kind of how we did with that.
We're going to probably have to have a little bit of an operating document about mission, how they're doing it, how they're doing it. This is a start.
Yeah. So I will get back, I will get back with, find out the information, like maybe kind of a mission document to say exactly what, you know, what there is. And we'll go, we'll go from there for next meeting. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
And as far as the last item up is a discussion with you, John Greenwood. There's nothing, nothing there changed, so I move that we table that. That's being. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Oh, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, no, I'm just continuing with you.
Okay, yeah, we were trying to move at a brisk pace. Is there any other, anything that, anything that should come before the meeting at this point? Is there any other, anything that anybody thinks should come before the meeting at this point?
I have a question. Seeing how we didn't put the, you know, fire commission on the charter, do you want to start looking at that?
At the ordinance?
At the ordinance.
Sure.
Because. Yeah, I'm going off the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Currently, you need to.
So we're.
Either appoint somebody to the ward or.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually in the process of reviewing all the ordinances, but we have them in like. Group one, two, and three, like by priority. I think fire was probably in two, like I have to go back and look. We have a firm working, but we could certainly move that up and figure out. You know, right now, it's, it's status quo, because we didn't move it in the charter.
Right.
But, yeah, to your point, it does need to work.
So what are you going to do, expand the fire commission? Like, what is it?
Well, we.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, there was talk about. Expanded another two members and remove the selectman off of the, the commit, committee. Should have been on there to begin with, but. It was a desperate move. Because you're changing, modifying.
I was, I was trying to have them kind of grouped together. And then we would do it almost like, like mini legislative sessions, like we'll do one group, then the next group, then the next group. But this one, I don't think is going to be a heavy lift. Certainly, we, we want to get through November seventh. Because if it's the next, you know, the next board of selectmen should be voting on it or whatever, because it's, it's going to take us that long to get the.
Oh, yeah.
Public hearing and all that. But it's, it's, public hearing is the only thing we have to do. And then we vote on it, and then after what, thirty days? Thirty-one days, it becomes an ordinance once we're done with the public hearing and vote on it. Yeah, and then there's a period of time, within that time, if they want a petition to overrule. So, I'll see if we can get something on the next one, so. You know, that way, coming into the next year, you know, done correctly. Any other business come for the group? Okay.
Motion to.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Please stand adjourned at seven thirty.